So, I think we're all up here. Joanne is not here tonight, so I will be chairing this meeting. I would like to call it to order and ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 We'll call, please.
Councilmember Atkinson.
Present.
Councilmember Barnes.
Present.
Councilmember Nathan.
Present.
Vice Mayor Moss.
Present.
And Mayor Wallace absent.
There was no closed session, so we will not have a report on any actions taken in that. And next on the agenda would be the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the city council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a member of the audience requests removal of the items from the consent calendar. Would anyone like to remove an item? Anyone in the audience? Okay. Could we have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Could we have a vote?
Councilmember Atkinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes.
Aye.
Councilmember Nathan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moss.
Yes. Aye. Okay, there, again, there's no presentation tonight. Oh, the, with a vote of four to zero, the consent calendar passes. So, there is no presentation tonight, and next would be good of the city. For persons desiring to address city council on an item that is not on the agenda, please note that the city policy limits each speaker up to three minutes. The mayor may reduce the time limit per speaker depending on the number of speakers. The Brown Act limits the council's ability to take and/or discuss items that are not on the agenda. Therefore, such items are normally referred to staff for comment or to a future agenda. Would anyone like to address the council tonight?
Yes, I have two speaker cards.
Please.
Brian Parsley and Carol O'Keefe.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Brian Parsley, Albany resident. This is my, this is my quarterly coming to the council, talking about the subject which is near and dear to my heart, which is council health care. I believe we've been on this topic for about five or six years now, ever since I was chair of the Social Economic Justice Commission, where it came before them with the recommendation that council adopt the, their health care is at the same level of city employees. If you don't remember, I hope you do, that currently the city council has a better health care package than that of every other city employee. Every other city employee is capped at Kaiser Family. If they want Blue Cross or any others, they must pay the difference between that and Kaiser Family. Council took it upon themselves to give themselves a better package than that of any other city We've recently seen a survey done by the city. I'm not quite sure how many cities were done. I believe it was, it was well over 30 cities, big and small, varying wages of their different councils, but Albany was the only city, the only city that had, their council had better health care than that of its city employees. Frankly, I've told you this for years. This is never going to go away until this is remedied. It's not going to be, and it's not about you, it's about the city council. So, when the outgoing members and the new members come on, I'm going to be back up here talking about this until this gets remedied. Unfortunately, I'm hoping that that will be soon. I would like to, I think actually Vice Mayor Moss summed it up in his 2012 Candidates Forum at 44 minutes and 35 seconds, when he said, "It seems to me it would be fair to go on the level that the people who actually do the work are city, are employees of the city." That is a direct quote from the Candidates Forum. So, I'm not quite sure why we're still here running around this topic when it could be very simply and easily moved. It's, it's not that big of an issue, but apparently to some it is. Thank you.
I'm an Albany resident, speaking as a representative of the Diverse Housing Working Group with a very brief report on our meeting last Wednesday where we competed with the World Series game. We're not going to do that again, but we did have a very good session. We were fortunate to have the Jeffs present. That was Jeff Bond and Jeff Levin of, who is the Sustainable Communities Policy Director for the East Bay Housing Organization, EBO. And they and others who had done a lot of homework were extremely helpful in giving us deeper information about housing issues. Our meeting last Wednesday focused on housing production in Albany. And in addition to the information session, there were a lot of opportunities for participants to record what they visualized increased housing production in Albany would mean to them, what issues they might have with it, how those issues might be addressed. So, it was a good opportunity for engagement as well as information. And we have future meetings coming up, I want to mention. These are all on Tuesdays, November the 18th. We're going to be talking about housing for special needs households. These sessions, by the way, are all at St. Albans Episcopal Church on Washington at Curtis from 7:00 to 9:00. They're on the second floor, but there's an elevator if you need one. And we're fortunate on November 18th that, and I apologize, I'm probably going to mispronounce her last name, but Elaine Decolinie, who's the Executive Director of Everyone Home, has agreed to participate, and I think that will, that she will add a substantial dimension to that meeting, so we're hoping to have lots of people there. Then we're also meeting on December 4th, or excuse me, December 2nd to talk about housing constraints, and on the 16th to talk about fair housing. We do have information on our website and our Facebook page, and soon we'll have a write-up on those about our October 29th session. So, that is the information for Diverse Housing Working Group. Let me step away for just a moment and then come back as simply a resident. I want to second Brian Parsley's call for the council to agendize a discussion of the health care benefits, and please make them equitable with what is allowed to the staff. If council wants to keep the current benefit that it has, then give it to the rest of the staff. If you don't want to, then make yours the same as theirs. The inequity is a real problem. Thank you.
Alan Maris, Albany resident, member of the Board of Education, speaking for myself. Tomorrow is an election, but we're not electing our city council members. Five members of the city council have already elected those board members, and they do represent the community in one way or another, but I'm a little concerned that the public hasn't had an opportunity to question these new city council members, at least, and give their opinions on what's important to them. And we had a meeting like that last week, which new council member Peggy McQuade provided to the public, in which members of the public could ask her questions about her positions on city issues and also express their concerns about city issues. And I would suggest that once the new city council is seated, that you do something similar, individually as new council members, or possibly as, as a city council in general. I know these, this is an opportunity for the public to speak on a few issues, but we're only given three minutes. And I think it would, it would really do, do something to encourage confidence by the public in their city council. If they have an opportunity, have at least one, something similar to an election forum that we've done just recently for the school board, which I thought was quite successful. And again, I thought Peggy's forum was very successful. There were 15 or 20 people there, and you could even televise it to sort of celebrate our new city council. I also would like to support Brian Parker in his concern. That would also, I think, if you address this issue on inequitable health care benefits for city council, you'd also help to increase some confidence of the public in the city council. Thank you. So, we won't be commenting on that. Yeah, okay. So, next would be public hearing, and first up on that is ordinance number 2014-09 to amend section 9 dash 4, 1.4b of the Albany Municipal Code to allow for an increase in the speed limit from 25 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour on a portion of Cleveland Avenue. Could we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The California Vehicle Code requires surveys to be conducted periodically to, to allow the police department to enforce speeds using radar and other forms of electronic enforcement. Pursuant to the vehicle code, a speed limit set arbitrarily lower than justified by a study can't be used to enforce, justified by study cannot be enforced using radar and other electronic means. The speed limit determinations rely on the basic premise that a reasonable speed limit is one that conforms to the behavior of a majority of the drivers. In particular, the speed of the 85th percentile driver is known as the critical speed, which is the speed at which, under normal circumstances, is the maximum safe driving speed. Furthermore, once that speed is determined, the speed limit is set at the nearest five mile an hour increment. For Cleveland Avenue, a recently conducted survey found that the 85th percentile speed is 37 miles an hour. It's posted at 25, indicating that a 35 mile an hour speed limit is appropriate. On the screen is a histogram of the observations made by the consultant, and as you can see, nearly all the drivers were, in this particular sample, were over the speed limit. And the 85th percentile came in at 37 miles an hour, as I indicated right in that area. The procedures in the vehicle code and the related standards, engineering standards, allow a further reduction of five miles an hour to the speed limit if there are collision rates or other factors that can be documented. In this case, the collision rate on Cleveland Avenue is 2.12 accidents per million vehicle miles, which is a little bit higher than the statewide average of 1.78 for this type of roadway. So, based on that collision rate, the consultant's recommending a further reduction of the speed limit from 35 down to 30 miles an hour. And this would apply from the Contra Costa County line, Alameda County, Contra Costa County line down to Washington. The Traffic and Safety Commission reviewed this proposal in September and recommends that you make this change. They also noted that the change should be implemented with pavement markings and signage along Washington Avenue approached in order to alert motorists of the change in speeds. They also incidentally indicated that in the future, the city engineer should be authorized to make these changes, but in this case, the speed limit is actually established in the municipal code, thus it's before you in the form of an ordinance. The police department also has reviewed this and supports the change as well. Be happy to answer any questions, and Lady Adriano Chavez is also here to help with any questions you might have.
Question?
Where is the Contra Costa County line on Cleveland?
It would be, it's just north of the lumberyard there in Albany Steel. It's, it changes, the street changes name from Cleveland to Jacuzzi right there.
And what is it in Contra Costa, the speed limit?
Offhand, I don't know. Do you?
So, then we'd, we'd be conforming to what the Contra Costa speed limit is then. And as you go south, let's see, I'm just picturing Cleveland in my mind, what, and it would be 30 miles an hour all the way until?
When you get to Washington, it becomes more residential in nature, so we're not recommending, the consultant hasn't recommended a change in that area. It goes down to 25 miles an hour for the last couple of blocks before you have to make the left turn under the, Buchanan.
By USDA.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Lady, can you come to the podium, please?
Good evening, Lady Adriano Chavez. There's going to be, the Traffic and Safety Commission also recommended pavement markings of 25 miles per hour ahead as a warning and signage as well, in anticipation of the speed change in the residential area.
Yeah, and if I could restate, because we have 25, 30, 35. Right now, it's 25.
Right.
The average would be 35, but because of the collision, we're going to take the 30 miles as one that would be safer and then conform.
Exactly.
Okay.
A question, one, when would this be looked at again? And would the expectation be that any of these bars would change on the chart? Or are they likely to stay similar?
We, I'll let Lady answer the question about when we do the next. I think it's every couple of years, but she can correct me if I'm wrong.
According to the California Vehicle Code, it's every five, seven, or 10 years that we're going to look at it again. The police department has to update the, the speed surveys every, as I said, every five, seven, or 10 years, depending on the need, and that's when we look at this, especially if, like, for instance, there's the streets that have experienced a change, that's going to be, those are going to be included in the, in the next survey.
Okay. And then one other question, just sort of a general curiosity. I noticed that Marin was studied, Buchanan, San Pablo, but not Solano in this report.
In this, in this report, Solano was not studied because there was no change between the last speed survey and this speed survey, which happened in 2008.
Okay. So, would it be up at some point to look at traffic and traffic flows?
If the desire of the community is, we can include it, although we can actually conduct a speed survey if you, if this council desires for Solano Avenue.
Yeah, because I think, you know, I'd be curious to know how much traffic is on Solano. It does seem like quite a bit.
About 10,000 vehicles was the last, the last recording in 2008.
Was the last recording?
Yeah. It has not varied much unless we really implement a change. That's when the California Vehicle Code recommends a thorough study like this. But I can conduct speed surveys, and I can actually look at the collisions if you, if you, if that's your desire.
Okay. Well, that's not on the agenda tonight, so.
No, I know.
A thought for another time, perhaps. Thanks. Okay. I'd like to open it up to the public if anyone has any comments or questions, further questions? Alan? So, I guess I have a little concern that we're using the current speeds as justification for raising the speed limit. I think we did something similar on Pierce Street. The speed, have we done anything on Pierce Street? Have we looked at? My sense is that the average speed or the median speed on Pierce Street is well over 35 miles an hour, and we wouldn't, I don't know what it is in Contra Costa County, but I wouldn't advise raising the speed limit above 25 miles an hour on Pierce Street. In fact, I would hope that we didn't start enforcing the 25 mile an hour speed limit on Pierce Street, so that it doesn't get up to the speeds that we're seeing on Cleveland. I also have another related concern, I think. I'll try it anyway, and if you want to shut me off, go ahead. I've had some really dangerous and frightening experiences at crosswalk with pedestrians who are jogging into the crosswalk and not stopping, and you don't have a time to see them before they get in the crosswalk. The same thing with bicyclists. They're coming so fast, and they don't stop to wait for the traffic to clear, and they come, I've had so many near misses that it's just, it's really very frightening to think of what could happen if, if somehow there isn't some enforcement or regulation to slow down pedestrians and bicyclists when they come to that crosswalk, so drivers have an opportunity to see them and stop as they're supposed to. Thank you.
Say which crosswalk again? I'm not.
Are you talking about? I'm not talking about Cleveland now. I'm just talking in general.
Oh, in crosswalk, okay.
I mean, the two intersections I've had a problem with were at, right behind the high school gym, coming onto Pomona, somebody coming from the high school grounds on a bicycle just, there's no opportunity to see him, and it could have been disastrous.
Good evening, Council. Brian Parsley, Albany resident. I wasn't actually going to speak to this, but I think it's interesting, kind of echoing what Alan said. What we're doing is we're rewarding illegal behavior. We're rewarding speeding. It's 25 miles an hour, but because nobody drives 25 miles an hour and they drive 37 miles an hour, that we're going to just go ahead and raise that. It actually makes more sense, especially since eventually there's going to be a park moving into the area that's actually before Washington, that we look at this realistically. Just because it's 30 miles an hour on the Contra Costa side doesn't mean it has to be 30 miles an hour on the Albany side or the Alameda County side. Coming off the freeway at the Albany exit there, it's very, very difficult, and if Caltrans doesn't do regular brush cutting back, it's very difficult to see the, the way the exit, if you come down onto Cleveland, it's very difficult to see the way the exit is positioned. So, looking down to Cleveland towards Jacuzzi, car's coming that way, and now we're going to raise the limit to 30 miles an hour, and then we're going to expect them to go, "Oh, no, there's Washington. We've got to slow down to 25 miles an hour before we hit the S curve." The reality is, it would probably be more beneficial to keep it 25 and actually do some enforcement of the 25 mile an hour speed limit. Therefore, you're telling drivers, "It's not okay to speed here, and we're not going to raise the speed limit. You're, you're coming into a residential area. There's a park here. Now, granted, the park is going to be fenced off, but I don't know what it's going to be like in five, seven, or 10 years. So, do we really want that 30 mile an hour speed limit when, if the fences come down in that area of the park? We, I mean, we just don't know." So, I don't think rewarding bad behavior is the answer. The answer is, well, the real answer is a full-time traffic enforcement officer, but we can't afford that. The, the reality is, there needs to be enforcement. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's, let's bring it back to council.
Yeah, I have the police waiting on this. It sounds like they want to use electronic equipment as much as anything.
Yeah, the irony of this is by increasing the speed limit, we can more effectively enforce the 30 mile an hour speed limit than we can the 25 mile an hour speed limit because the provisions of the vehicle code.
Comments or something? You know, the, you know, I sort of, in my own mind, agree with what Brian's saying, although it does seem to me that if, you know, you, you can only push the law so far, and if everyone's breaking it, then it becomes, you know, too, almost impossible to enforce these things. And without a, a traffic, you know, an extra traffic person monitoring those speeds, it's, you know, then it seems, you know, much worse in my mind. So, well, let's, I will, a vote. Do we have a motion?
Sure. I move that we have the first reading of ordinance number 2014-09 to amend section 9 dash 1.4b of the Albany Municipal Code to allow for an increase in the speed limit from 25 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour on a portion of Cleveland Avenue.
Second. Okay. We have a, a motion by Councilwoman Atkinson and a second by Councilman Barnes. Can we have a vote?
Councilmember Atkinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes.
Aye.
Councilmember Nathan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moss.
Aye.
unanimous, and the motion passes. Next on the agenda would be?
72, resolution number 2014-96 to amend the contract between the City of Albany and the California Public Employees Retirement System to adjust the employee sharing cost of additional benefits provision for local fire safety members. Ordinance number 2014-08 to amend the contract between the City of Albany and the California Public Employees Retirement System to adjust the employee sharing cost of additional benefit provision for local fire safety members. First reading.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Reading, oh, thank you. This is the first reading of the ordinance to amend the contract between the firefighters and calpers for their pension plan. Currently, the employees are contributing 9% of wages towards their pension in their union contract or MOU. They negotiated and agreed to up that to 10 and 1/2% of wages. So, in order to amend the contract, we need to go through the ordinance process to abide by what we have in our MOU. Do you have any questions? I'll ask her.
Questions? Anyone in the audience like to speak to this issue? No? Okay. Bring it back to council. Any, any council, any comments? No? All right, then, we have a motion.
Sure. I recommend that the council adopt resolution number 2014-96, a resolution of intention to approve an amendment to the contract between the City of Albany and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System. And two, introduce ordinance number 2014-08, an ordinance of the Albany City Council authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City of Albany and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System as the first reading.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Could we have a vote?
Councilmember Atkinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes.
Aye.
Councilmember Nathan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moss.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Okay. Going on to the next agenda item, we are, we have no unfinished business tonight, so we are on to new business, and the new business is the Automatic Aid Agreement for Fire Protection and Emergency Medical Services between the City of Berkeley and the City of Albany. Could we have a staff report? Great.
To recap, what we have before you.
To recap, what we have before you is a memorandum of understanding between the Berkeley Fire Department and the Albany Fire Department for automatic aid between the two jurisdictions. Currently, we do not have an automatic aid agreement with any bordering fire jurisdictions at this time. We have what's considered a mutual aid agreement. And what a mutual aid agreement is, is when you exhaust all your resources for the city, then you're allowed to make a call for other resources from other bordering jurisdictions, which takes time to exhaust all those resources and then call and specifically single out when you're having an emergency what exact resources you need. Where automatic aid comes into play, the benefit of that is, is regardless of where the call's at, you send the closest responder and the needed resources automatically, which saves valuable time in dispatching and getting the right resources on scene much quicker or faster. In the, in the past, cities have had staffing that's been very good across the United States, and now it's just not possible to fund for every emergency in your city. You have to rely upon other districts that are there to do that. So this is becoming more and more of a popular, needed agreement of automatic aid. Automatic aid's been around since 1976, but more and more fire districts and fire cities are moving towards this. In fact, Berkeley approved that for their council for Albany-Berkley, but they also did Maraga-Rinda, Richmond, El Cerrito-Kensington of automatic aid agreements. So the citizens get the best service regardless of where their house falls from one block to the other. So currently, we'll be able to develop key procedures, protocols, integrate our training, our radio communication, while we seamlessly transition on calls as if we were one department, which is the way that it should be. Of course, we're not going to cover all of Berkeley, there are certain specific districts in Berkeley we're going to cover, and for the most part, they're going to back us up for fires in our complete city area. Currently, we provide ambulance service when they run out of ambulances, fire engines when they run out of fire engines. However, the, the borders that we may be closer to will be responding maybe into their district before they will, depending on where it's at. So we have a map and agree upon areas that would be most beneficial to us and also the City of Berkeley. And this is going to take dispatch training on both our 911 centers, training of our field personnel. This is just a start. And when I came here, that was one of the things on the back burner. The Albany Fire Department and the Berkeley Fire Department for four to five years have been planning on getting this done, so this is nothing new to what's been presented between the two departments. It's just took some time and is happening right now. It's going to improve our service to our citizens, improve regional coverage between our departments, and down the line, I would like to also be in talks with Richmond and El Cerrito since we do border those, but I'm taking one step at a time, and I, and I'm confident that that will happen as Berkeley has just agreed for that. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Michael?
I just have a quick one. It's my understanding that our fire department and EMTs are unique in that they have transport rights to the hospital. Does that ring a bell? This is something that came up about a year ago.
Yes, and so, so does Berkeley. We have, and the laws that we have, we have an exclusive operating agreement for ambulance transport, which is in today's world extremely hard to get. We happen to have that service, so we are grandfathered in to that. We have what's called 201 rights. If you wanted to provide ambulance transport today, you would have to get approval from the county, and what they do is they put a request for proposal out to private ambulance companies, so we'd have to compete, and that would be up to the EMS agency whether we transport or not, but we're just fortunate to not be in that situation now. And there's a lot of departments in this county that would love to have ambulance transport, but there's only just a chosen few that are able to do that.
So what do other cities do? Do they have to hand off sick or injured people to a private ambulance service?
The way it works in this county is Berkeley, Albany, and there's, the lab is, has ambulance transport, Piedmont and Alameda City, because they provided those services from a date that a judge made a decision, and the San Bernardino Act is when that happened. So they were able to be grandfathered in. The other ones, the, the county said, minus those ones I just spoke of, if you want to provide ambulance transport into that, you have to bid for the whole county. Well, most fire departments that are still left, they can't bid for the whole county, all of Oakland, all of these other areas. So what happened is, I'm not even sure I wasn't here, but if a fire department even put in to bid, a private ambulance company bid for that contract that was, the RFP was proposed by the EMS agency, and they chose Paramedics Plus to provide ambulance service to the entire county minus the ones who had those agreements in place.
Okay, so what happens if you have some sort of working agreement with the city that does not have transport rights? Does that cause a conflict?
No, part of the agreement is with the EMS agency is that the private ambulance company, if we run out of ambulances, Berkeley runs out of ambulances, Paramedics Plus will come in to also supplement that. So it's, and we would do the same. If Oakland had no ambulances and there's a critical call, we would take our ambulance to go to that call then and there. So we do provide a ambulance, it would be kind of a mutual, there's no agreement that's been made. It's been proposed out there, but it hasn't been finalized, but we would provide those services to all the other cities in this county, and if we need be, we would provide those outside the county to El Cerrito, Richmond, but we'd have to get approval from the authority having jurisdiction, the EMS agency, to go in there because the ambulance company that's in Cocoa County, they have rights to that, and for us to go in there and take a person out, they'd have to be in a dire situation to do that. But we have run with Piedmont, we routinely run with Berkeley all the time, as in they come into our city all the time. They're very busy, and we have one ambulance, so we continually provide that, but we, we could go anywhere in the county if, depending on what the emergency was.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I had a question about what would happen if we were to do something with El Cerrito, would that be more complicated given our ambulance status? But I, I think you answered that. So, yeah, that was basically my, my question. This is essentially, as I understand it, in the MOU, that we pay for our costs and they pay for their costs, and there's no complicated back and forth of, you know, if you came, if they, if we went into Berkeley five times and they only came here three times, they're not going to compensate us or vice versa?
No, with the, for structured fire response, there, there, if we used equipment at a big warehouse fire, we used foam or something like that, they, they would reimburse us for our, our material supplies that we use. Most of the time, you use water and we have our hose, it's not going to be an issue, but if we used up a lot of our supplies on there, we would ask for reimbursement for something like that, which is, is really rare. But no, we would provide that service at no cost, as, as if they would do to us. And under mutual aid, that's what we do. We don't charge. I believe in the state mutual aid is after 12 hours, then you can recover overtime costs and different costs, and the reason for that is, you can call back other members of your department, by that time, they come in and it's expected that people in their days off just won't stay home. It's like, you have an emergency or something, we're going to help you out till you can get other resources here, but it's rare, if any, that you would be on the scene for, for 12 hours, and at that time, it would be kind of up to the city, depending on what it was, if we would ask for reimbursement, but there's no financial cost now. We're providing that under mutual aid, and this will be automatic aid, so we're providing it now for, at no cost, as if they come to us also, they, Berkeley comes in at no cost to us.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone in the audience like to comment on all this? No? Okay, bring it back to council. I think we have comments, so.
Sure, I would be happy to move this, move the staff recommendation.
My second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Could we have a vote?
Councilmember Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Councilmember Nason?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moss?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous again, and we have our, our ordinance. Finally, on the agenda here, we're down to other business reports on meeting, other business reports on meetings attended, announcements on events, future agenda items, et cetera. Have anything to report? No?
I do. I, first, I'd like to mention that there is a, on Wednesday afternoon at 5 o'clock, over at the East Bay Regional Park District office in Oakland, there will be a scoping meeting on the notice of preparation for the Albany Beach Restoration Project. So that's the announcement part, and I'd like to ask for a, a future agenda item to discuss how we can strengthen our partnership in the East Bay Regional Park District in such a way that we can start having this kind of discussion here in Albany. I think that it's very tough on park users to go down to Oakland. I think that the, while it is a future state park and to be administered by a regional entity, it's very important that local park users have the, have the best possible opportunity to participate in the, in the process, and I think it's something that people on, with widely divergent views about the future of the beach, agree about this point, and, well, I won't argue my point, I'll just say I think it should be on our, on our, on a future agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. It's not, you know, Oakland doesn't seem that far, but their offices are like practically in San Leandro, it's like right at the line, so it takes 25 to 30 minutes, there's no public transportation that's really convenient, so I think that's a great idea that, because I know that Richmond has them, has often meetings that they will come up to, to this part of the bay, so, you know, maybe that's something to think about. I think that's a very good suggestion.
I agree. Anyone else? Okay, so, seeing, I will adjourn this meeting.